Tonight, I'm going to ask you all the lights for the pledge. Before we get started, I have to absolutely apologize for the air conditioning. Unfortunately, of course, we picked the hottest night of the year. We had a couple of celebrations and the air conditioning unfortunately not working. But we will get that fixed probably in time for next year. So I'll just send it somewhere right now. If I can basically please show up before please.
Let's do this. United States of America and the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a couple of vows here and introductions. Tonight we have two celebrations. One on the tour tonight before we get into our radio. If anybody wishes there is water in the back so please, I believe it's right outside the door, please avail yourselves of that. Well, tonight again, we have two celebrations. We're going to honor one of our employees who's been here thirty-five years with us. It is a gentleman who everybody knows and a gentleman who's worked so hard and kept all of our residents for years. He has done a yeoman's work up at our recreation center in establishing all different kinds of programs and being a part of everything that goes on here. I want to just talk about John Michon who many of you know not only from our recreation center but also from years at our local schools, especially for our local school. John, and I just want to read this because it's really encompassing what John's all about. Since nineteen eighty-three, John has served as recreation specialist and of course his favorite tennis instructor, instructor, summer camp supervisor, and is currently our senior recreation director of the village. John has been resident since nineteen sixty-six in our village. Maureen O'Leary has also been a resident, I believe, most of your life here as well. John also has three children, raised those three children here. Mike, TJ, and Kathy and their five grandchildren. I want to welcome them as well who are here. John graduated St. John's University. His grandson just started St. John's today. So I'm very happy to hear that. Studying at campus at St. John's, so it's a wonderful thing. And as I said to you before, he's graduated at St. John's. That's a great thing to say as well. John, while he was there, again, also taught in Roosevelt, taught Roosevelt High School. But we all know John's passion was basketball and tennis. John kept to play against Dr. J while he was at high school. Now, when you think about that, John was on the faculty, Dr. J was a student. But John kept to play against one of the greatest professionals in basketball all the time. And when you listen to John talk about sports and talk about basketball, his passion, you can see the love he had for the game. And he kept that up for so many years, playing not only by us but also our community and doing so many kinds of, so many things. In nineteen sixty-eight, he moved from to four boroughs elementary schools to sixth grade teacher. John eventually became assistant principal there. But not only did he just become assistant principal there, he started what is now a very popular Saturday morning program while he was there. So again, the youth programs that John has started not only in the school districts, he took that to us as well. And it's been a phenomenal, phenomenal career for John. Not only there but with us, starting our recreation programs and our camps and being an active part and making sure that they succeed. To this day, still work today and they come to make that happen. So John, you retired in two thousand and four, but there's no way that you retired from that. Okay? So we wanted to say thank you so much for everything that you've done in our village. There's a whole host of other things that John has done, but more importantly, we all know John loves to play tennis. And for quite a number of years, we've had tennis tournament, tennis ladder, other than that. John has competed in that tennis ladder for forty-four years. And won it many times. I don't even know if that many times he's won it. Again, his love, not only that he gets to play the game, but his ability to take his teaching and then teach others the game is just a phenomenal part of what John's all about. So John, the thirty-five years I've got in the village, we wanted to say thank you so much for everything that you've done. And we have a little citation in our memory today. And again, we just wanted to say thank you. Now, if you'd please come over to your family so we can... John, I believe Doug and John have completed. So John, congratulations. Congratulations on your thirty-five years. Thank you. All right, this is for you. Small, small congratulations. Thank you. John, congratulations and thanks. And don't talk yet. And now ladies and gentlemen, for our next presentation, not only the light giving all the history and we want to talk about this wonderful gentleman who this village owes so much to, that there are so many of, you know, some of the board who've been talking as well. But I just, we're going to recognize tonight, unveil, and we had planned to do this a while back due to some changes in schedules and things like that, couldn't do it. But we're here to honor tonight, who will go down as one of the greatest mayor of our village. And I say that because all of the things that we had to deal with while he was here. Now, I say that in the company of many of the greatest mayors we've had. Mayor Lee Corbin is here to join us tonight. So we're planning for you to join us tonight. Mayor Phil Munner is here to join us tonight. And I say that because they all work together very closely. And we were very lucky to have them build a foundation, all of it, for what we have today and the things that we have in our village today. And it's great to have them all here. They all, again, were part of this, of a board together. They worked together, cohesively, they worked together to make sure that this village is something that everybody would be proud to call home, and that's what they did. And tonight we honor the mayor who finished up that group of four from the appointment of, when Anne appointed him back in two thousand and one to sixteen years later, when he stepped down from being mayor. And that is, of course, Mayor Tom Tew. As you all know, I'm... Guy was very tight and wore a jacket. But I just wanted to go through a couple of things, because Tom started his career in our village. Forget the career, Tom is a lifelong resident, born and raised in a family that did so much for our community. And it wasn't just Tom, it was his entire family. You know, I said this to Tom not a number of years ago, I'm talking about his wonderful mom, Anne. Anne touched all of our lives in many ways. If you grew up here and you attended our living victory school or church, Anne was part of everything you did. The Tweedy family was part of everything we did. And Tom just embodied what the Tweedy family has to our community. It was one of those families that no matter what happened in our community, no matter what went on, they were there to help, they were there to be part of it, they were there to make it better for everyone. And Tom, again, was the embodiment of that, becoming not only mayor eventually, but all the things he did before that, all the things that he took part of, from being civic president to being a lector at church to being, all the different things that he did, he just embodied the force of heart was all about. And we were lucky enough that he eventually joined the board when Anne appointed him. He worked with Mayor Kevin Green, he worked with Mayor Phil Munner through some very, very tough times, some very, very tough times. And when I read some of the things that Tom dealt with through all of those things and all of that time, you realize how much and how much of a mark he left on our village and how much he's still working today, day in, day out with us, because he hasn't quit. I can tell you, he hasn't quit. He's there with us with the bomb, he's there with us with the third track, he's there with us with all the different things that have gone on. He's still there, he is today helping us out. And he served on our architectural review board, he served on the recreation board before he became a trustee. And then after that, he was involved in so many different things that happened. And when I see that, the number of things that he was involved in, just to read a quick list, when you think about it, during his tenure, during his tenure as mayor, forget all the rest of it, Hurricane Sandy and Hurricane Irene. And I can assure you, because I remember being here for Hurricane Sandy, Hurricane Sandy, Tom was out on the streets from the minute the hurricane hit and before that, planning what we had to do. But from the minute the hurricane hit, making sure people had electricity, making sure people had power. Trees fell on your house, that you got those trees off, going around getting the contractors and bringing them to the houses that had to be bought. That's what Tom did. That's the kind of person he is. On the front, when it came to, and I'm going to talk about a drainage improvement project that Tom has had and is still working on today, because we're still, hopefully getting to the point of fruition of that. But during his tenure on the board, we had some serious flooding that went on over in West End and other parts of the village. Tom was able to negotiate and work with the New York State to build a sun and a drainage basin along with the other board members in Belmont Park. That has been a long process. We're almost there, but it's all the foundation that Tom dealt with to make sure that we got there and the work that he did. When it came to nine eleven, I believe Anne, you were mayor during nine eleven, okay? So remember the people he lost in our town. Tom, the fire department was able to get the relevant you see outside. Fire department worked hard to get that, God bless them, they did it, they got it, they brought it here. Tom took it and then worked with the fire department and contractors, day in and day out, to make sure we have the roof and the wall. That we will celebrate those lives next weekend. But Tom was able to make sure that that got worked in a way that would be such an honor and a dedication, not only to the people he lost, but definitely to the families as well members to those people. Tom's dedication, his hard work, his background, Tom not only, Tom is not only what you saw as mayor and trustee, Tom is a business owner in our village. Tom is also one of our Chamber of Commerce and an active part of that. So he took his skills and helped do that. That also went to another great project that he worked on and sort of fruition of what he left, and that was our new pool. For those of you who've seen the pool and have been to the pool, I don't have to tell you how great it is. Yesterday, we had a record number of people at that glow stage. I can't tell you could not believe in that glow stage. The fellow trustees and those who were there probably will agree, they couldn't move because there were so many people there. Tom Dylan's going in the back of a vehicle right there. There were a lot of people in this room, okay? There was an outbreak to get food, that's how crazy it was.
He was naked.
Again, the vision that Tom had and the leadership that Tom showed to get that project done, what it took was to get the financing close and then get a construction done and being there using his skills and talent, day in and day out, to make sure the job got done the right way. We can't thank him enough for that. Then, of course, there was the fight with the third track in the first round, led by Mayor Phil Munner, working as he appointed Tom so that could be competitive. Okay? The two of them worked tirelessly, hours upon hours upon hours upon hours, because they were going to take homes. The first project was a hardship. And what they did to make sure that nothing got damaged in our village and still working today to make sure that nothing gets damaged in our village. And then, of course, we all know the fight with the BLTs and the casino. It wasn't just one casino that was damaged. We all know about the fight with the BLTs. We all know about the fight with the casino. It was just an amazing, amazing time. And now we're back with another Belmont project that we're not so sure we want either. And where is Tom? Tom is beside the table, of course, because that's his dedication to our village. Tom is here day in and day out. So we are very grateful for everything that he's done. I can't even go into all the other details, but what I really want to talk about is Tom's family, because that's what's more important to him than anything else. Tom's family gave up so much to be with us so that he could be with us, so that he could be doing these things. Tom said one time, and I'll never forget this, and I quote my predecessors a lot, but for those of you who know me, you will know I quote my predecessor. But the one thing he said one day when we were sitting there, and I don't know who asked him the question about what he wanted to be remembered for, was that he was a good husband and a good father. And I'll never forget when he said that. And Tom was, okay? Michael and Katie, you're here. Michael and Katie gave up so much for him to be here with us. Again, on behalf of the grateful village, thank you so much to the two of you for letting that grow up while you grew up, letting that be lost. Katie, congratulations on the wedding. I know that was a couple of weeks ago, so that's fantastic. I'm sure he was a proud father of you down the avenue. But then, of course, to Mary Ann, who gave up countless hours, when she couldn't be with us, she was. But even that, Mary Ann worked hard, she worked in her own career, there was a lot of times she couldn't be and a lot of times that they had to separate. I can tell you on numerous anniversaries and birthdays that Mary Ann was separated from Tom. And just again, Mary Ann, same there. We can't thank you enough for your dedication and love that you gave to us in giving us Tom that he can be for us. So thank you so much again. You know, the beauty of it is that Tom's a friend to all of us. Tom gives to this village day in and day out and still does. Those friendships, we had a wonderful time running for office together, not to mention all the other things that we did. Tom, I thank you for your friendship, I thank you for your counsel, I thank you for everything that you've given us. There are a few other people who want to speak here, so we're going to let them do that, but tonight is yours and you deserve this more than anything. So hang on one second, I'm going to turn it over to our real trustees here. And I'll definitely make Kevin to show for a few words. And then we ask everybody to join us as we unveil the pictures, okay?
There'll be a few.
There'll be a few.
Tom, thank you very much for everything you've done over the six years, lost points and services. I do believe that was totally during your term, we were able to keep all things and cherished stuff for all of the same, all of adapting to change in the world around us. You were able to adapt and successfully tackle significant of those challenges that faces village by signet case, a scene to significant project with quality of life problems. Four blocks certainly better place for your terms. And lastly, thank you for the most important personally for your friendship and all the lessons you shared and the cherished stuff.
Good evening, everyone. Tom, I'm so happy to roll through tonight's honor. So quite thank you for the invite of me to soon receive our board, two greatest members that I've had. I serve our village, it's only a way, it's not just because I'm there, but Dave is a last thought, she's there to support us, she's always been a patient, I want to know. Being when, when you look at, you stood for all of your, your partners after this, taken through, spanned the planet. So we know that's so important now, and I'm a challenge every day, face that challenge, challenge. As the mayor said yesterday, we took mine, I will always remember the mayor's love and why, hoping you have that for years ago and the honor that just saved me, so long I may have honored you, that people have a mission for me, I've done to accomplish what I did to, so I feel that people, vision is just the same to me. It would be up in the air, probably in the open, it's been great. So a lot of us would treasure that very special memory and a little special connection to all of you who are here tonight. Mayor, I do...
With that, I'm now going to ask everyone to please turn around and we invite Tom's family out so that we can unveil the board. It's hot, so let's get closer. Gentlemen, gentlemen. It's not a statue? The full, the full bronze statue outside of your office. If I can say a few things, first of all, Doug's a cool guy, I can't thank you enough. I mean, thank you very much. And again, of course, you and Kevin and Mike, it was a great, proud moment I had with you guys and say that, I really do appreciate that you served, you do. Now, I'm now the twenty-sixth mayor, that's on these, this student's ball, and, but each one of us and each board that has gone through have faced their own challenges. Not least with starting a village, World War I, the Depression, World War II, Vietnam War, Korean War, downturns in the seventies, and then working with aging infrastructure. Anne Corbin recognized that first when she, when she built the recreation pool building again. Something she came about and wanted to see happen and again, replacing aging infrastructure, which is really much of what we did, but again, it doesn't happen alone with my family, of course, and thank, I'm very honored that Anne, Kevin, and Phil each are here today. It was a pleasure to work, serve with them, it was a pleasure serving you all. The call that we have for civic stewardship, we are just so incredibly fortunate that talented men, women continue to put themselves up to lead in this village and to serve really with, you know, with very, very little remuneration. And I've just, I've just been very, very happy and been part of that legacy of those who came forward again. My thanks to all the boards with whom I served, my pleasure to serve on those boards, and it has really been my great pleasure and delight to have served as your mayor. And so I thank you very much and really, I really do appreciate that. Look forward to seeing the statue where it is.
Thank you, Mayor Longfellow. I would ask the board, minutes of the board is fourteen, was a public hearing of ninety Gerald Trump. I would ask the board to approve the schedule that accounts payable as follows. General fund, one million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and eighty-six cents. Swimming pool fund, eight four thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars, ninety-one cents. Community development, zero. Capital fund, one hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars for a grand total of one million, six hundred and four thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow. I would ask the board to approve the presented one party application in accordance with section thirty-two dash twelve G.
So second, any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
I would ask the board to award the Tiny Town renovation bid to Terro Tech and the total bid amounts of four hundred and eighty-one thousand, which includes ad ultimates number one through six as presented below and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
All of the resolution.
Second.
Just so everybody knows, this resolution awards the contract for Tiny Town, so we'll be moving. I hope we have that completed in the next few months for the fall. We do realize that it's delayed, but at the same time, we are committed to getting the project out and moving forward. So, any other discussion? Ms. Walsh, please call.
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow. I would ask the board to authorize a merit award in the amount of one thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars to Kevin Pierceall. Pierceall was a sanitation supervisor and this then includes overtime merit for the only additional duties and responsibilities during the absence of the position of general supervisor in Department of Public Works.
All of the... Second, I just wanted to take this opportunity and Kevin Pierceall, Kevin Pierceall has stepped up nicely. As you all know, Richie Allen's been a wonderful, wonderful general supervisor with us for over thirty years, fantastic guy, but Kevin has stepped up in his absence and this resolution helps to raise some of the, and some of the costs associated with Kevin being that. So thank him for his work. With that, I would ask for, you all, please call.
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow. I would ask the board to accept the Tiny Letter of Claire Hughes, who is the administrative assistant in administration after nearly, nearly fifteen years of service, which was effective August seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen.
I would ask that there's a wish of appreciation for any...
Second.
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Bluehendrick.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow.
Also, I would, I am again, everything, we've got to combine, we want to thank the board and the organization, the board is our village and the work that she did, there is the substance of the entire, we should all best.
I would ask the board to authorize up to three eligible police candidates to participate in the basic force in police supervision held by the Nassau County Police Department, held on Mondays, Fridays, from September twenty-fourth through October nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
All of the...
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow. I would ask the board to approve the request of sound sites of the association to use the recreation pool building for its monthly meetings on the presented dates.
So, second, any discussion? All is in favor? I'm closing. Ms. Cherry.
I would ask the board to approve the request of the four block five apartment called Burnin Street beginning at twelve noon to hold an Oktoberfest celebration for that hundred, for that one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary on Saturday, September twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second, any discussion? And we ask everybody to please join us for the fire department celebration, but if you go over to the park and spend your day at Business Day there as well, both things are happening the same day. And it's going to be a wonderful day for them. Please, two things, one, go attend both events, but two, pray for a really nice day for the kids, okay? So with that, I will ask all in favor?
Aye.
Close, Ms. Cherry.
I would ask the board to authorize the central office monitoring contract for the four block library at an annual fee of three hundred dollars for a term of five years for the village administrator to sign the contract.
All of the... Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, please call.
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow. I would ask the board to accept the Tiny Letter of Donald Hell, Senior, a part-time supervisor at Sentinel Gardens and Recreation Center after nine years of service, which went into effect of August twenty-second.
Thank you, Tom, for all of your work, I really appreciate it.
And I'll second it with thanks to all the cold days and nights we spent struggling out in the country.
Any other discussion? I also want to thank Tom because not only was it cold nights showing me out of the hockery, it was the cold days he had to sit there watching, bird watching, counting the birds and sending the call, counting all the different Sentinel Gardens, counting all the different birds. Don loved this village, Don still loves this village, he gave his heart and soul to the recreation center and to Sentinel Gardens. They're a much more beautiful place because of the, the work that he did. So with that, I will ask, Ms. Walsh, please call.
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow. I would ask the board to approve request of the West End Civic Association... I would ask the board to approve the request of the North End Civic Association to use the recreation pool building for their monthly meetings on Thursday, October 4th, and Thursday, November 8th.
So, move. Second, any discussion? All is in favor? I propose, Ms. Carr.
I would ask the board to approve the request of the North End Civic Association to use the Remont Firehouse for their monthly meetings at 7:30 PM on the presented dates.
So, move. Any discussion? All is in favor? I propose, Ms. Carr.
I would ask the board to approve the proposal of David Swift, author of texts of the design preparation of construction and mid documents and professional services during the construction of the accessibility project for Village Hall and the Pool Park Library in the amount of 82,000 dollars.
All of their resolution. I'll say. Discussion, Ms. Walsh, would you please call?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow. I would ask the board to surplus the John Deere X475 tractor with accessories and attachments, and to sell same in the amount of 5,000 dollars to feed the side of West Maryville.
All of their resolution.
Second, discussion. Ms. Walsh, would you please call? Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow. I would ask the board to ratify the proposed change order number one for the Pink Club Designs regarding the improvements of the Atlantic Avenue Firehouse in the amount of 2,500 dollars for a wall down to the electric heater for the first floor restroom.
All of their resolution. Discussion, Ms. Walsh, would you please call?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow. I would ask the board to ratify the proposed change order number three from the Pink Club Designs regarding the improvements of the Atlantic Avenue Firehouse in the amount of 3,500 dollars to refurbish the entire existing policy or its floor.
All of their resolution. Discussion, Ms. Walsh, would you please call?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow. I would ask the board to surplus the 1996 Chevy pickup K2090 race truck from the Recreation Department.
All of their resolution. Second, discussion, Ms. Walsh, would you please call?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow. I would ask the board to install two stop signs at the following two locations. One at the north west corner of South Tyson Avenue and Tyson Avenue going southbound, which is at the restaurant, and on the northeast corner of South Tyson Avenue and Atlantic Avenue going westbound at the cross corner. Any other resolution?
Second, Ms. Walsh, would you please call?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow. I would ask the board to introduce the proposed local law number two of 2018 to amend the village code regarding the location of all the laws and day shops may only be located in the adult spaces of the B-3 zoning districts of the village code.
All of their resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please call?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow.
Ladies and gentlemen, the resolution just gets calls for a public hearing to discuss the proposed local law regarding replacement of day shops and new quarters. That public hearing has, has ordered, so I'm quite sure it's coming, and we'll issue comments regarding that.
I would ask the board to determine that proposed local law number two of 2018 will not have a significant effect on the environment and is a type two action as that terms applied to the secret.
All of their resolution. Second, Ms. Walsh, would you please call?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow. I would ask the board to approve the request of the pool park chamber of commerce to use ratified law on Thursday, October 4th, to hold their October meeting, subject to receipt of certificate of insurance.
Second, discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Close, Ms. Carr.
I would ask the board to ratify the proposed change order number four of the Pink Club Designs regarding the improvements of the Atlantic Avenue Firehouse in the amount of 2,800 dollars for the installation of two steel walters set with concrete as shaw.
Second, discussion, Ms. Walsh, would you please call?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow. I would ask the board to amend the bond resolution for Tiny Town improvements, which adopted on March 6, 2018, from 500,000 dollars to 730,000 dollars, which includes the bid amounts of 481,000 dollars and playground equipment.
All of their resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please call?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longfellow. On the other end, I would ask the board to determine that the Tiny Town improvement bond resolution in the amount of 730,000 dollars will not have a significant effect on the environment and is a type two action as that turns applied to the secret.
All of their resolution. I'll say. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please call?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chabana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Carr, for a few minutes. With regards to EPW, Bullock Street project the most causing half the deed, for the next few weeks, as soon as the weather cools down, the soil will be placed. This will either maximize the chance of the soil growing in the root springy hole that we should grow. Initially, over the next few weeks, Super Kennedy's 15th, that will super be named, will be easily tolerated, deter effective trees, and can, assuming plant growth. And previously mentioned, the work will show the trees that often have the maximize their growth potential, without the accident occur for over a year's time. The state camping project is still under review, continuing to work the engineering firm, including Super Kennedy's 15th, meeting the engineering firm involved. Today, the optimal optimal solution could be lost if we implement a program. Any proto-change will show updated presence for the next few weeks. As you may notice, number three is the first bit of the little area that has died or died. As such, in the coming weeks, we will start moving some of the trees and replacing them. At this point in time, we hope that the interesting spots can be utilized for the trees. With regards to the Damocles Law, last week, the Vice State Development Board released a final scoping document along with their response to comments submitted during the scoping, very well addressed, right? The next phase, the ESD released a direct, primary impact statement, and all the public hearing during the fourth quarter of this year. Though I appreciate the ESD responding to numerous questions the village submitted during the process, scoping process, there are a number of significant issues that have been highlighted in the final scoping document. Amongst them are, the use of the North Lot, which is the lot that holds four park hours to the west end. It's going to be used, or being proposed to use, for 2,860 spaces when there are events at the arena, which is approximately, about 490 a year. Although it was mentioned of a potential block, no details have been provided. By way of purchase, these 2,860 spaces, plus the spaces on the south lot, hold 7,450 spaces, which is one and a half times larger than the blocking that exists in the Nassau County. What makes it so disappointing is that the ESD responded throughout the question about the extra use of the North Lot during the ROP, because their response was, quote, "Not anticipated that the North Lot will be used, having fallen to the development project in Site 8, being the return of Site 8, which will be the arena to refresh shop in place." Therefore, seen the North Lot that way for use, not a significant concern. There are a number of other significant concerns, traffic, facilities, et cetera, that the ESD will study during the upcoming process. It appears that there will be only one hearing on the DEIS, minimal time during the coming. There is all residents to read the final scoping document, so they can formulate a bunch of concerns. Additionally, in the coming weeks, Damocles has brought the whole education session, community leaders, so they can even engage in further education for their children. And that's the, you know, school story. But also, as we approved a number of, of meetings in the civic associations coming up, there is all residents to come to those civic meetings where we can address concerns, back and forth, when ideas may come up, and educate everyone in a informal setting, which definitely can overcome both. So, both that. Thanks.
For our conservation site, I'd like to buy all the existing ten gardens and the senior nature. Remember, new gardens will be able to park the tree, and there will be inside and outside fields. Visitors will enjoy seeing the vaults around the river camp on that side, and the tree side will be unified, and other areas will be naturally spaced. The volunteers will be welcome, especially to the young and the lean at first Saturday at 8:00 AM. Join the next video, the main event, on the field Saturday, April 6th. Check out the website, get the garden out of order, it's interesting stories and all the codes, and I look forward to it. My opinion, just more comment regarding, now, actually, some of the hearing, which will deal with the complex challenges of locating businesses, different kinds of businesses. I just want to mention something very fond of the New York Athletics, they had a number of committees, where the property, the subjects of the issue, the selection function. The only party, the city of Titan, you know, about 50 cents per hour on that side, is here, here heading. There are citizens of the union leaders, certainly the village board, and schools, which are involved, where they call the unions, tomorrow. And Martin and I, a safety health committee, have been with them, but that will be taking a look at serious issues such as oil prices, and dangers to our peace, which is made of, such as the D'Arcy, there's John Rogers, who, at least upon the record, has been really good for the women, and gave a fantastic presentation, a wonderful presentation, very insightful presentation, that would have been used for a lot of users. So, I want to really give credit to them, to have them come to the restaurant for the community that information.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Trustee Chang?
Attempted a separate report, not really. Hey, I think the message, John, you're listening to the last one, she just got, I guess, the camera, you can resist, and type, look at the website. Now, I do want to mention, please look at the library website, there's a great program that's going up, Folk Festival Monday, September 23rd, the friends are having their sale this weekend, Saturday, Sunday, and briefly, third try, we do not have any updates on their six week look ahead. We are still waiting, and I think they are still waiting to get the results of their requirements and borings, which have to be completed, so it'll have to be tested before they can start actually digging, to be right. Drive carefully, this school's open.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Chiara.
Up at the Rex Center, we recently held an awards night for the pool and youth summer programs. This was the first year that we all were joining. It went very smoothly. Children who participated in these programs are recognized for their individual achievements as their proud parents, family, and friends looked on. All were treated to hamburgers and high bars, and everybody had a nice evening. The Pool Park Literally Awards Night will take place on Friday, September 14, starting at 7:00 PM at the Rex Center. Awards will be given to District 29 tournament players, and also their buddies, who volunteer their time to assist with the Challenger Tournament. These buddies did a great job contributing to the success of the Challenger Tournament. Registration for the majority of our four programs will begin on Wednesday, September 12, and Thursday, September 13, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM at the pool building. Senior registrations will be on Wednesday, September 12, and Thursday, September 13, from 9:30 PM to 1:30 PM. A flyer was recently sent out to all residents detailing the programs, or you can always check out village website or call the Rex Center. The Women's Volleyball Chance was won by Poppy's Place. Congratulations to the Poppy's team. I would like to thank Echo, the sentiments of one of our volleyball reps, thanking Richie Clifford and Don Lee Menz for all their hard work scheduling, coordinating, and keeping the stats for the league. Thanks for your involvement. Up at the pool, the last play, standing of the pool season tradition, took place yesterday in Memorial Day. The pool had an enormous crowd, as the whistle and one blew at 5:00 PM, signaling everyone standing around the perimeter, jumping to the beach, into the pool for the last swim of the season. The street crowd was tremendous, and it was great to see so many of our pool commanders enjoying the last day at the pool. A big thanks goes out to Kurt Major, Superintendent of Recreation, Tom Gill, Jason Ned, Cameron Dwyer, our pool directors, and all the pool staff who contributed to a great guest experience at the pool facility. Thank you, bud, for the great job this season. Today was our senior picnic couple of the pool. It was also very well attended by our senior teammates. All had a great time relaxing, listening to music, playing bingo, while enjoying the fantastic weather. Lunch and dessert were served, and I was amazed to see how many guests were having fun coming down to the water slides. It was fun to watch. It was a great day, and I enjoyed being a part of it. Thanks to all of our fantastic staff, who's doing a great job putting this day together. I'd also like to conclude, goes to our Recreation Pool Committee for coming together to provide suggestions and ideas on how to keep our facilities permanent and moving forward. As the mayor mentioned yesterday, nine months and a couple of weeks to go, we'll open up our next pool season.
Nine months, three years. I'm just be late. Thank you, sir. And now, for, just briefly, I just want to remind everybody, next week, September 11, we will have our ceremony, as we do every year, that will begin 8:30 by down on the front lawn of the school. Yes, please come down. We're all welcome, including your families. It's, again, an honor to remember. It's a, is a very wonderful thing, it started unfortunately in a tragedy, but, again, to honor and celebrate the lives of people who lived on that day. As we said before, the school is open. Please, it's really simple. Drive carefully. And when we say that, that really means, always be ones. Make sure you stop at the stop signs. Make sure you follow, it's that simple. The only one who's drawing that far is the driver. So, please make sure you do that, okay? I know our police department does not want to give out tickets. They will, but they don't want to give out tickets. So, I want to thank them, too. Also, again, Rebecca, thank you for being here. Christopher, thank you again for being here, and all of you, it was very hot. And, of course, we always thank you for being here, and doing all this, and, um, things, so, so thank you very much. With that, we will, I would like to motion to adjourn. We've got a second?
Aye.
Is it in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we will open, open the mic for the floor for our residents. Again, you all talk, Mr. Pike.
Ripley, five foot, Milliday Avenue.
Mr. Mayor and members of the board, just to wrap this up comments, none of our remarks will be reflected in anyone's informed questions, so there's no need to interrupt or meddle with what happened last time. This is now the fourth time I'm standing before you regarding Locust Street devastation created by the ends of man and not Mother Nature this time. You have heard comments, thoughts, suggestions, alternatives, and lastly, please, made by myself and others which obviously have gone unnoticed. We now have new curbs, driveway aprons and asphalt just for like the humps. Some of us even have new sidewalks labs as well, for replacements necessitated due to damage caused by the randomness of the tree removal company. That is what we gained. What we lost is something that can never be replaced, at least not in our polite terms. We've heard the statements that new trees will be replanted and that will passify us and remedy the situation we now find ourselves in. We lost a living canopy of trees that stood like centuries as we entered Locust Street from Floral Parkway. Regarding tree roots, and I suppose in an effort to justify this fiasco, in an island nail story on July 16th, Mayor Longmore explored as follows: "Many of the tree roots had grown into the street destabilizing it and leading to damage. When Locust Street was taken down to the underlying soil, I walked up and down that street and observed the invisible signs of roots growing into the street." If the village has observed that condition, maybe it's been documented by photographs, I don't know. Before any of the trees came down, I had a conversation with Mayor Longmore, where he assured me that only the trees that would necessarily come down would be removed. He also stated that there were a total of 160 trees on Locust and only 41 were coming down. If my guess is correct, that would be 119 trees remaining. When I took a walk on Locust from Floral Parkway down to Mellett this past weekend and encountered the trees, there are 22 remaining on the even side of the street and 31 on the odd side, including three dead ones. That adds up to 53, quite a discrepancy from 119 that I expected to find. Another excuse we heard for removing the trees was because the whole road had to be reconstructed due to the drainage problems on Locust. Since I was out counting the trees, I thought why not tally up the number of new drains and/or sewers installed to alleviate our quote drainage problems. Much to my surprise as for the trees, there is one drain on either side of Locust approximately halfway between Carnation and Cherry and one at the corner of Miller and Locust on either side, all four pre-existing, no new ones installed. I have to admit, I'm starting to suspect that maybe we have not told the truth about this project. What comes to mind is a Latin phrase that some of you may remember from law school: falsus in a, falsus in a nonus. The translation is this: "If you lie about one thing, you're quite likely to have the capacity to lie about everything." Another thing that disturbs me in addition to the falsus we were told has to do with the way the residents of Locust Street in particular were treated as this project went on. I sent numerous emails to Mr. Vander, our village administrator, regarding issues with the work being done, with two exceptions, one arriving just to set me up, thank you. None of those emails were even responded to by Mr. Vander, even when I asked for confirmation and received them. The one that was responded to after I sent a second request was regarding the damage sustained to my property during the tree removal process, although the response I received was incorrect and did not address the damage issue that I raised. To this day, I still have not received a response regarding that damage. I also brought to this attention that the contract required the lending to provide D and B engineering with an email every day by 4:00 p.m. detailing the work to be done the next day. I had asked that the next day's schedule be posted on the Village of Floral Park website because the information would be helpful in giving the residents of Locust Street information on what to expect each day. For example, if someone had an appliance delivery scheduled, or perhaps an alternative day could be selected for delivery, or if an elderly neighbor even insisted getting to a car far from and adjoining the street, alternative arrangements could have been made. I didn't just bring the problems to Mr. Vander's attention, but also constructive suggestions, even though all were ignored. It just shows total lack of consideration and disregard by some village officials towards the taxpayers of Floral Park. The one exception to that comment is Kevin Ginay, who was on the project daily and was responsive and showed what I felt was genuinely concerned, and I thank you for that. There have been a number of FOIL requests I've made regarding the project as it was ongoing. Some have been responded to, many have not. Many of the bid and contract documents have been provided for which I thank Ms. Walsh and her staff for being so accommodating to me. Approximately 500 pages have been provided to me so far, which I have read, and I came across some interesting things. One of them was that in response to a village official asking how many full-time employees the lending had, the response was three, including the office manager. I find it absolutely incredulous that a company with three full-time employees, including the office manager, was awarded a contract of this scope and magnitude and undertaking expected to last approximately two and a half months. And for that reason, the FOIL request was submitted by me requesting identification of all subcontractors, which would include the tree removal company and Die Pratt Inc., who we now know is the company who actually did the renovation and not pointing, as of this date, that FOIL request has not been responded to. Since the July 10th meeting, we've established that tests are available and could have been performed to determine the necessity for removing trees because of instability in tree roots, as spoke about that the last time, and I'm not going to repeat myself. Suffice it to say, it wasn't done. I also sent a FOIL requesting information about the use of tree roof guard systems that the village would use in the future to ensure that when new trees are planted, the tree roof guards will deter the thinner roots from accessing the surface level and encourage the tree to send roots deeper below the road disruption base. I was advised that no study was done and no tree roof guards were used, and I'm wondering how the village of Floral Park will keep this root meets road issue from happening all over and over again. Two weeks ago, when I spoke, I wrote over numerous requirements that the contract the village of Floral Park has awarded to the lending that were not being enforced. Apparently, the reason that the terms of the contract were not being enforced is that that mean whoever was responsible for reading the contract failed to do so before signing it. Although I never went to law school, I can appreciate the importance of reading the legal document before signing the name to it. The village determined mistakenly that what I was asking was that the contract should be sued, even though those words never came out of my mouth. I was merely asking that a binding contract be enforced and that the residents of Floral Park receive the items for which they are paying. Many of the deficiencies could be seen simply by looking out a window, or if you were brave enough to venture outside, especially in bright sunlight amidst the underlenting dust and noise, you could easily observe it. Again, it's easy enough to verify if the topsoil is screened and cleaned, as called for in the contract, to be free of stones, wood chips, cement, and other construction debris before planting the new sod. I'll have to read that section of the contract. Perhaps the funds that rightfully should be withheld for nonperformance could be used to purchase somewhat more mature trees and larger trees than what I fear will be planted. We have been told that there is an approved list of trees that can be planted in consultation with the village augurist. At least I've been told it's the village augurist, and I hope it's not the same gentleman who has consulted private trees on Tula Avenue between Plainfield and Marina being planted, most of which are dead or dying, as has been observed. My intent this evening is not to stand here and embarrass anyone, and if that happens, I apologize. I just want you to know that people are watching what is going on. It's not business as usual, and I hate the park, in Floral Park, remains a reference acknowledging its park-like beauty and not a reference of park, as in sitting in a block in traffic jams trying to maneuver around in or out of this town once the third rail project, another inconceived, ill-conceived project gets underway. I always heard what comments that have been told to me. One last comment. We don't know the constant barrage of airplane noise in the village indoors. In an effort to avoid another disaster on Locust Street, and in light of the fact that it now resembles an airstrip and not a residential street, and especially because some of the flight patterns of JFK fly directly over Locust Street, I suggest that the residents of Locust Street be discouraged and forbidden from displaying Christmas lights, so as not to confuse the airplane taxis flying over Locust thinking it's a one-way. And I'm not being conceited. You know what? I do have one question. I said I didn't. Is there even one member of the board or village official willing to admit this debacle should not have occurred? And I didn't use the word mistake on purpose, mistakes happen all the time. This wasn't just a mistake. It was obviously premeditated, and it wasn't just one person who made this decision. It was a collaborative decision that has been in works for a long time, and for that reason, all of you have maybe not blood on your hands, but certainly sappled. And I hope the residents of Floral Park respond accordingly on next election day. Thank you.
I wanted to speak tonight, but I just wanted to come off and I wanted to make known that she's a good neighbor, a good friend, and I don't think she's really failed by anybody except that lady. She's been heaven, she's been a gentleman throughout this process. She's accepted this town. I've talked to her only a couple of times. She's been very polite and nice in my life, and any contractors that we've been asking, they actually would like to meet up a couple of persons, but you know, asking why the man's better than my wife's face. You know, the record. He's doing that, and why was I trying to talk to him? Now, anybody else who would have done that in my wife's face wouldn't be doing it for me. And I asked if I'd beat that person, but nobody wants to. But they've been very nice to me, very nice to me, very nice. He pushed the sixty-five year old woman, one of the brothers in his family. He created this common smash. He didn't have to. I don't know, I don't know why he did it. I don't know if those comments were right, but she feels that there's something that can't be wrong here. I don't know what I'm saying, I'm just saying support her and the lady that's good, and hopefully, you know, if you're planning on building a project, you gotta do things that you did. That's what a lot of people want to say, and why they did. Anybody else have any questions? All right, let me keep mine.
I have a question or a statement. I have approached several of these on Locust Street, regarding one way, putting in a floor, you know, slow down, and I would even ask about the one way, if the law's not putting it too thick. Well, the construction that was done, we didn't have butters, but now we have them, right? They each are put on each side, so everybody now falls on the outside of that. Now the street is out there. So tomorrow, school starts, and everybody is racing down that brand new street road, but every kid on the scene with a bicycle is down, with a band, but the moms are leaving in tomorrow morning. What about us? What about all the good kids on our lawn? What is going to be done about it?
Take a look. You sent me the traffic comment from there, so I will take a look at it. I won't know what we're going to do yet. We're going to take a look and see if we have any problems on the road before, if it does create any, if it's creating hazard.
If we have any problems on that road before?
No.
It's ignoring it every morning and every afternoon. It's not good.
Yes, I understand, and we are going to take a look at some of the things in this project.
And we know that there's an existing problem on that, we gave the road and the sods on my move. So what makes things look any different now that Locust Street and the road hot holes are slowly running down?
So again, we'll take a look at it, take a look at what you gave us, some of the other things that are possible, but we're not saying nothing.
I don't know. A lot of things over personal, and I've spoken to many of you during the whole process of Locust Street. I just have to say, talk to each other, because I got more answers than did not go with you, because you're supposed to be saying, "Oh, your entire summer in this area," okay? And we have Locust Street, I really believe in that. You guys destroyed that park.
Yeah, thank you for letting me speak, Mr. Mayor and members. My name is Frank O'Conner, I live on Iris Avenue. I'm just appalled by what happened on Locust. I think we lost 2,000 years of trees in about two years. Is it worth it just for a beautiful asphalt roadway or a beautiful concrete curb? I don't think so. I think, is this, and I'll ask you the question, is this a precedent now for every time that they're going to repave the street in Floral Park? If it is, I'm happy. I can't stay here. I came here because this is a beautiful, tree-lined street, the houses are beautiful, the village, the canopies of the streets make this village. If you take these trees down all the time just to pave the road or replace a curb, this place is going to look like post-war Levittown. Now, you're old enough to know what Levittown was, if you're going to go to, it's going to be a desert. Another thing, excuse me, I'm a little upset, I'm excited. I live on Iris Avenue, it's a very narrow street.
What's your address?
Seventy-one.
That's a perfect spot.
Yes, between Tula and Carnation.
Not including Carnation, the road.
No, no, that's a whole different world. Beautiful sycamore trees, it's another world. When I moved in here very few years ago, we had several more trees. We had about six or seven beautiful maple trees, a big oak tree, and some of them passed away, they were beyond their years, they had to come down. I understand, it's a hazard. But recently, at Thirty Iris, there was a beautiful warden tree in front of a high wrench. Now, the owner came in and just locked the tree down. One, it's not his tree, that's a village tree. It's not his tree, it's a village tree. Those trees on Iris Avenue were planted by the village because we do not have a grassy medium between the sidewalk and the street, so there's no room to plant trees there. The trees that on Iris Avenue were planted on people's lawns by the village and their village trees. I tried to have my tree pruned once, and I was told in no uncertain terms, "That's not your tree, that's a village tree." So how does this guy get away with cutting a tree down? Now, about a week ago, this happened in the beginning of Locust, about a week ago, I see a box truck backed up over the lawn, right directly over where the tree wants to, and the truck is like two feet from the stoop, from the stoop, and they're unloading stuff. And I'm saying to myself, gee, this son of a gun, he chopped a tree down just because he wanted to back his truck, so we're not going to walk that far. My point is, people, I'm seeing a lot of this with the younger neighbors, nobody wants to break leaves, people are worried about the utilities, about their gas lines, their sewer lines, their water line. I understand that. We even plant trees that are utility-friendly, that are people-friendly, and I don't think planting trees with three-inch diameters is going to help the people on Locust. You have to do something more than media than that. I would say get trees with eight-inch diameter. Spend a little more money, it's an investment in our village, it's a good investment, it'll pay off. Kevin, I saw your presentation on Floral Village Good Meal, it was very good, thank you. And thank you, excuse me, my voice losing the voice, thank you for responding to me when I called you about the situation on Iris Avenue. I don't know, I just, I think we need to look towards the future and preserve our trees, because this is what attracts people.
Mr. President, one, just to answer your question about the sidewalk trees, you are planting, you are looking for large trees, you're not looking for, you are looking for large trees to put back. Again, it will be wire-friendly, it will be people-friendly, as you say, it will be utility-friendly. We won't, and I can say this without, whether the people on Locust believe it or not, I can't guarantee what they do, okay? We don't take down any trees unless we have to, absolutely not.
That's what I always hope.
And I will tell you, each road project is different. I can't tell you what the next one is going to be. You will have it without a wind, you will have it like that, and where everyone can save a tree as we did here, we will do that. We are not going to do a road project without doing it, one, correctly, two, we're spending a lot of money on road projects, so we're going to make them last, three, when we put in curbs and drainage and anything like that, although we may not be putting in drains as is common to learn. The road now has drainings to those drains that it never had before, okay? If I had left the trees, if we had left the trees, the first 50 mile an hour wind wound up in New York in one of those homes, we're charged with safety and insecurity of the people that live there. If we had left a tree that in some way we had trimmed, and God forbid we trimmed the roots, and I do have pictures of the trees with the roots, with the roots of the tree. If we had left that and done that, given the first 50 mile an hour wind, you don't even need a hurricane, no. Given the first, God forbid that wound up in someone's house and God forbid someone gave a kill, okay? Who was sitting in the living room, one on a simple matter, just watching TV, okay? Those are the reasons that we do the things we do, they're checked, they're done, we have engineers, we have lawyers, we have all kinds of people who get paid for what we do. We don't make decisions. The Locust Project is on the ground for three years, three years for our success. That's how long we move back and forth. It is a main road in our village, okay? The main road, and yeah, putting in street lamps and things like that, those are things we will take a look at, I will tell you right now. Street lamps are nothing like the directories, the bars, something you want, okay? I can tell you that, there's facts about that. But the reality is that we take everything very seriously, we make sure people care for you. We don't take down trees unless we absolutely have to. And we have a rule here, we won't allow people to take down trees that aren't, people call us all the time, they want their trees down. Ninety percent of them don't get, don't get what they want.
And I adore that.
So I, just so you know.
One thing to think about in the future, there may be a way to mitigate losing all of our trees, you know, can we allow people?
To do that, as we possibly.
Some way to go about this, that will possibly save these old trees. These trees to me are like friends. I admit I'm a tree lover.
I can assure you that no one in this board wants to take down a tree at the moment.
All right, well, I'm just concerned about the future. I mean, what's done is done. We can change the future.
Mr. O'Connor, we have a lot on 66 Iris Avenue. Had a huge tree.
Are you, Kevin, are you Mr. Ginay?
John Ryan.
Oh, okay, okay. I spoke, maybe you left me a message, Mr. O'Connor.
Sixty-six Iris Avenue. We had no sidewalks. Had a huge tree, tree's gone, and we have sidewalks. I don't live there anymore, I live in my living. Things have changed.
Yeah, well, I walk around this village quite a bit, and 50%, I may be, this may be conservative too, 50% of the large stately trees in our village are lifting up mostly sidewalks, some of them are lifting up curbs. Does that mean we should cut down 50% of the trees?
It's funny you say that, because when I moved from Iris Avenue to local, local access, then I moved to local house and the sidewalk, I had to replace my sidewalk three times because a tree was removed.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's tough, it's tough. I'm on my second sidewalk, and I'm going through my third, if the village will give me a permit, I don't know. I didn't know you'd give a permit of sidewalk flags, but.
I just tell you, the trees are good, you have that right.
Yeah, yeah, and there may be a way to mitigate, I'm thinking like, maybe there's a way around trees where we could put something that was movable, still had some kind of intent.
Like floating sidewalks?
Yeah, yes, you know? No, maybe they, I think it is that not.
You've lost a lot of money.
I know, but.
Yes, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you very much, sir. And I hope we get this straight now, in our future looks, a lot of trees.
Is there anybody else who has questions?
I just want to say, if this was a project that was going on for three years, maybe it would have been a good idea to let the residents know how many trees were coming down longer than we before you started. That's one thing. Second thing, this is in the contract, and you might want to, I'll highlight it for you, sod shall be nursery grown at least two years old, somebody's going to check that, right? The sod bed shall be raped and all farm matter shall be removed and disposed of, that sure hasn't been done. Sod shall be planted within 24 hours from the time of cutting unless tightly rolled or stored, another thing I'm sure is going to be looked into. The contractor shall be responsible for proper watering, protection, and maintenance of the sod areas. A lot of some of it's already been hidden now. Where the sod fails to grow, the contractor shall repair and re-sod these areas at his expense. During drought, the contractor shall water the sod area frequently to ensure growth. Mr. White is going to take care of this?
Oh, yeah.
Perfect, I'm going to hold you for it. Since January 1st up to August 31st, since I've worked in that business, there has been more than 19 new residents in Floral Park. I'm concerned that most of them have not received our new president's book, that's kit, book, handbook. And the reason I say that is the neighbors that have moved in next to me are pretty rough, telling me all their dates, easing myself, I'm telling them what the right is. But maybe, we are so far behind in that resident population, that these are the residents that are forcing someone to position the truck with the tree, believing they just don't have the rules. I'm not saying we don't have the rules, but these people need to know how to live in their own way. What is the point of with these transcripts or pressing handles or papers, basically?
Since we began, we tried to meet a couple of residents, we screwed the pace together a lot now, I think, they don't know.
I'm trying to volunteer for that community because I know that there is.
We are ready to go, we are ready to move on, we had a whole day of eight, I'm going to start virtual, which we have to do.
To write on the century notes, it was a spot. I don't understand, if I come to you guys and I talk to you in this forum, I send emails, I send you a mail about that mailbox that we talked about, I don't understand what else we can do if we're asking for you to come to us, or we want to work with you, why don't we get a response?
No one.
I just want, I'm sending you not to Jerry about this, I'm sending you not to, and so what, and so now what happens?
I have no access, I can't, I'm trying to reply to the folks, I'm going to back the box, there is no, you're a patient.
Just say, just say no, you're saying you don't want to check, and I haven't heard from you, but you've seen, I've seen you.
Yes, I did, that was you.
I went to none of it.
He was to say, the garbage that they put on the doors, I'm tired of sending pictures, I'm tired of all of it.
As you know, I've tried, we sent letters, I've sent emails to his meeting, so he's sending letters out to those residents.
So the code is no fines, there's just a suggestion to put it out on this day of this month, terrible laws. Then I guess it doesn't really matter, but you do have to fill it out. If there are no fines, it doesn't really matter, right? It's a suggestion to put the garbage out at a certain time or a certain day, it doesn't matter. So similarly, that, someone mentioned rolling, so you don't really have to be willing to do it.
My first thing is I'm better over that.
No, it doesn't, take a look at the phone.
I'll take a look.
Mary Marcus Toddman, 51 Locust Street, former 70 Locust Street, six minutes old in the new village. I just have one request following, I want my. I just have one request following along my sister-in-law. Kathy Hawkins was saying, we are really concerned about the speed on Locust Street. My kids are grown now, but when I was walking my children to school, I was constantly putting my hands out to people speeding by, slowing down, slowing down. And sometimes you just need a reminder of like, when I travel on Carnation now from Floral Parkway, they had that electronic speed sign, and they have the sign out the kids. And I remind myself, I want people to drive on my block. You know, I should drive, I should drive on other people's block how I want them to drive on mine, so it's a reminder. So I figured it would be a good idea to make like an official request that there perhaps be the installation temporary of that electronic speed sign on the block of Locust between Carnation and Cherry and or Cherry and Miller. Or the presence of a police vehicle, even the empty police vehicle that's sometimes on Cherry, just as a reminder to, and it really is, the moms in the minivans. And I am a mom in a minivan, but they are the speeders because they've gotta drop the kids off, and then they've got to get to work. I understand that. But we have like little kids on the block looking to school and are going to all the, you know, the kids that don't,[1769.54]